Good evening, this is an informal meeting of the Gardner City Council on Monday, June 5th, 2023. We are meeting informally tonight to discuss the city's FY 2024 budget proposed by Mayor Nicholson. As in years past, we will go page by page through the budget packet that is included in our meeting packet. For the public watching this evening, I'd like to begin by sharing information about the city's budget process up to this point. After meeting with city department heads, many of them more than once, and communicating with our city auditor, Mayor Nicholson presented the city council with his city budget recommendations on Wednesday, May 10th. His proposed budget also became available to the public that day on the city's website. The city council and the public then had the opportunity to review the budget and contact the mayor department heads with questions. Since then, the city council finance, public safety, public service, and public welfare standing committees have met with city department heads from the departments under each committee, Mayor Nicholson and city auditor John Richard, during standing committee meetings for further study of the budget and answers to questions. Those standing committee meetings are available on the City of Gardner's YouTube channel. This evening, the city council is meeting as a whole committee to review and discuss the mayor's budget recommendations. Mayor Nicholson and city auditor John Richard are here this evening to assist with information and answer questions. The city council has the authority to cut line items from the proposed city budget with the exception of the school department, where the city council can cut only from the bottom line of the school department's proposed budget. Other than that, the city council has the authority to cut lines from city departments. We will begin on page one of the budget packet. One point of organization as we go through the budget that I'd like to bring to the council's attention, as we typically have in the past, when referring to a particular line item within the budget, please use the line number all the way to the left of the page. So, for example, on page one, line number six under city council is communications. Those line numbers are unique to each line, and they make it most convenient to be able to follow along. So, to begin the FY 2024 budget review, we're going to begin on page one. Line number one through line forty-four. Is there anything to report, or are there any proposed cuts, questions, comments from the council? Does everyone have line one through line forty-four?
No.
No.
Through thirty-eight, okay.
I just have some question. The council salaries, I assume include the amounts necessary for the second part of the fiscal year, that, at which time, after the new election, those salaries change?
Yes, Finance Committee, yes.
Yes, we asked that question.
Okay, very good.
The Finance Committee had no other recommendations.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, things to report, proposed cuts from the council on page one? Okay, page two. Line number thirty-nine through seventy-nine. Anything to report, proposed cuts, comments, questions from the city council?
Similarly, if I may ask, that the mayor's salary includes adjustments that we voted on that go into effect at the beginning of the second half of the fiscal year?
Further questions, comments? Page three. Line eighty through one hundred and twenty. Questions, comments, things to report from the council?
Just have a general question for the mayor. We're dealing with salaries for all the different department heads and others. And I know we have a salary study that's going on, and I'm aware of what the status of that is, but perhaps for the public who might be listening or watching, what the status of that is and when we expect to, when we expect to have recommendations from the, from the study, or a report from this, from this study.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Counselor. The study is currently ongoing. Department heads had to fill out a questionnaire regarding every staff member who reports to them in their department. The questionnaires have been completed. They had to be submitted to their respective department heads. In order for review, for the accuracy, and the department heads had to sign those off. We are completing that department head review. Department heads had to send their descriptions to either myself, if they are a mayoral-appointed department head, or the council president, if there's a council-appointed department head. Those reviews are currently ongoing. Once those are done, they'll be compiled in a whole online upload system for the consultant to review those all and then make the recommendations and comparisons after those. I expect we'll have the full results done by end, mid to end of September for consideration of potential November, December supplemental budget when everything gets certified. That's why you'll notice on the materials before you, the collective bargaining agreements that are there are the ones that are currently finalized and negotiated with all of our unions. The non-union salaries represent a 2% increase for the current personnel that are there, but the overall salaries and labor budget total represents a 1.2% decrease from what was voted on in last year's budget. We're kind of keeping all major increases on hold, or any adjustments on hold, until we get the salary survey back. Everyone who's currently employed with the city is set to get a 2% cost of living adjustment, as are the vacant positions that we fill, but there's a lot of things that go with those. Salaries, termination leave for someone who, you know, retires or resigns, that we have to pay out their benefit time, longevity payments, things of that nature. That's really where that decrease comes into play. It's not the salaries itself. But we're waiting for any major adjustments until that comes back, probably in September, October.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mack?
I just want to clarify, the salary survey is all city employees, non-union, not just city hall, correct?
Correct. City and school are included.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions, comments from the committee, from the council? Okay, moving on to page three. Line number one-twenty-one through one-sixty-one. Reports, cuts, questions, comments from the council? Okay, line.
I have one question. Actually, it's a carryover. In the mayor's unclassified, termination leave reserve for $150,000, are we aware of anybody that we know is going to be, that's going to be subjected to termination leave at the present time?
We know of at least two retirements that are coming so far, potentially four, if you count some of the firefighters. But we know, but they haven't given us the notification yet. We have two employees that have already given us their notification, ah, three employees, excuse me, both assistant city clerks and the director of the library, who have notified us that they will be retiring within the next fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further questions, comments from the council? That was on page four. We're moving on to page five. Line one-sixty-two through line two-oh-two. Reports, cuts, questions, comments from the council?
Madam President.
Counselor Tyros?
Yeah, I have a question on line one-seventy-five, and it's for the mayor. I noticed that the department budget was $7,000, and the mayor's budget was $1,000. Was there computer software that we chose to not purchase?
That was, when the budget memorandum was sent out to the department heads, one of the things I asked for was, what does your department need to get by? However, so we could get a better picture on our forecasting outlook, what we could build up to, if you could have everything you wanted for your department and money wasn't an object, what would that look like? That was one of those things that came up in that discussion, was this is really where we'd like to be, but what was finally requested was what we need to get by.
Understood.
That's also why, if you add up all the different departments' requests versus what's been submitted for the finalized budget, there's about a $7.5 million difference. It's because, again, it's the wish list of this is the utmost optimal operation of the department versus this is what we need to get by under our current operations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything further? Okay, page six. Line two-oh-three through two-forty-three. Anything to report, cuts, questions, comments from the council? Page seven. Line number two-forty-four through two-eighty-four. Reports, cuts, questions, comments from the council? Okay, page eight. Line number two-eighty-five through three-twenty-five. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the council? Page nine. Line three-twenty-six through three-sixty-six. Anything to report, cuts, questions, comments from the city council? Page number ten. Line number three-sixty-seven through four-oh-seven. Anything from the city council? Page eleven. Line number four-oh-eight through four-forty-eight. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the city council?
Just have a question about the police department, not a particular line item, but are we short officers? Have we budgeted for a full complement if we don't have them?
We do. We are currently in the process of hiring additional four officers to the civil service list. Once we have those four, we're projecting one vacancy from someone who just notified us of going to a different department. So, we'll be down one. However, all of those have been budgeted for in this budget. You'll notice in the department's request, it's higher because in 2003, we dropped down from forty officers to our current thirty-five. The department's request is to put us back up to that forty. Hopefully, we can build up to that, but this has us at our current thirty-five member staffing level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Page twelve, line four-forty-nine through four-eighty-nine. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the council? Page thirteen. Line number four-ninety through five-thirty. Questions, comments, reports, cuts?
Ask the same question of the mayor of the fire department with respect to the crew and where we stand as far as what we've budgeted versus what we have?
We're currently down approximately six firefighters, and we're currently trying to hire off the civil service list. However, all of those vacancies are budgeted for in this budget.
And where do we stand with respect to filling in? Are we all off the list?
It's all off the list, yeah, until the legislature votes.
That was my next question. What's the status of that in the legislature?
Yes, the legislature, we submitted our home petition that the city council voted on a couple of years ago, died in the last legislative session. It didn't make it through committee on third reading. It made it through the committee on public safety and the committees on first and second reading, but third reading didn't get through. There were thirty-two civil service removal bills that did not make it through the committee on third hearing. They have all been resubmitted for this current legislative session, so we're still awaiting action of the legislature. I expect if the legislature doesn't act, we'll probably see some administrative action based on the $36 million lawsuit settlement that the civil service office just was ordered to pay by the Supreme Judicial Court. However, that's where we currently stand, is it's backing the committee on public safety in step one after not making it through the last legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Counselor Tyros?
Mr. Mayor, I noticed line item five-twelve, five-thirteen, and five-fifteen, in line with your previous comment about being wish list items, but I had a question about specifically line five-twelve, the EMS coordinator, and I believe it's training, probably officer.
Yes.
Is that work being done by somebody working out of scale, or is it, we hiring?
It's certainly not a great pay in the collective bargaining. I believe there's two EMS coordinators, Lieutenant Moniz and Lieutenant Hulet, Lieutenant Hulet being the main EMS coordinator for the department.
Understood. Is there an intention to get a full-time EMS coordinator?
We can build up to it again, too. That's why I've kind of made sure that all of those things are in here so that even the council could see this is where we often should be as a city.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. Further? Anything further from the council? Page fourteen, uh, thirteen. Page fourteen. Line number five-thirty-one through five-seventy-one. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the council? Line fifteen. I'm sorry, page fifteen. Line number five-seventy-two through six-twelve. Anything from the city council?
Just to point out, this includes Public Works and the Public Safety Committee, Public Service Committee, met with the various department heads within its jurisdiction last week and addressed a variety, all of the different budgets within that jurisdiction. And there were no cuts recommended by the service committee, although I, as chair, lamented that we could not find one.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions, comments?
Yes, I've got a quick, Madam Chair, line five-eighty-one. The department head was looking for nearly $3 million. Can somebody enlighten me on maybe what that was?
Line five-eighty-one, capital improvement plans, anything from the committees? Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, to show the full picture of what we could be looking for, this is everything that's currently included on the capital improvement plan that was approved by the city council, that's set by the city's ordinance. Every year, the group of department heads has to submit anything that could have a loan taken out for it. It has to have a minimum dollar threshold of over $15,000 and a lifespan of over ten years. And that's our, basically, our, this is our list of projects that we'd like to do. If we were to fully fund everything that was on this list, that's what this $2.9 million is. This is what we traditionally have used our free cash for, is this is the one-time projects that we use. This is everything from purchasing vehicles for long-term use at the Department of Public Works, fire engines, the salt shed, a new roof, the different capital projects to our buildings. That's what this encompasses here. We'll certainly provide an updated copy. Actually, I think by ordinance, the new copy of the capital improvement plan is going to be submitted to the city council for the August meeting. It's currently in its finalizing stages by the city engineer, who by ordinance oversees that process. But again, this is just everything that's included on that list, so that you could see if we were to fund everything, this is what it would cost us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Chair, one more thing. Is there a high priority item that we're not accounting for to get accomplished and include in this budget, or we're going to have to adjust?
I wouldn't go here. This is normally what we do in a free cash. I don't think there's anything too-too pressing that we haven't already addressed. We actually hit thirteen items on the capital improvement list this past fiscal year through our free cash appropriations. So, we were able to make a big dent into it as well. So, it's, we're in a good spot.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything further on page fifteen? Page sixteen. Line number six-thirteen through six-fifty-six. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the city council? Line, I'm sorry, page seventeen. Line six-fifty-seven through six-ninety-seven. Anything from the city council? Page eighteen. Line number six-ninety-eight through seven-thirty-eight. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the council? Page nineteen. Line number seven-thirty-nine through seven-seventy-nine. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the city council? Page twenty. Line number seven-eighty through eight-twenty. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the council? Page twenty-one. Line number eight-twenty-one through eight-sixty-one. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the council? Page twenty-two. Line number eight-sixty-two through nine-oh-two. Anything from the city council? Page twenty-three. Line nine-oh-three through nine-twenty. Questions, comments, cuts, reports from the city council? Okay, we were also provided some additional information with budget-related within the packet. Is there any questions, comments, anything for the mayor on any of those additional pages?
Madam President?
Counselor Boone?
The, I'm looking at the, excuse me, revenue expenditure forecast for 2022. Seventy-two million, four-thirty-one. And we're estimating sixty-seven million, nine-sixty-two for 2023. I'm just curious why, why the estimate is low, if you will.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that we like to do to make sure that we're living within our means here, and the auditor can certainly explain this a little further, is we take the actuals from the past three fiscal years and take ninety percent of what those actuals are. That way, we have a better picture of where we're likely to be, or we know we could at least get above that. So, while to make sure that's our, you know, our safety net, if, you know, something doesn't come in as expected. For instance, when the Great Recession happened, excise tax took a big hit. We've got a really big hit in our excise tax, and we really need to recover for a five-year period there. So, that's why we want to make sure we're not, if we know, great, we had a great year in excise this year. We're not going off of that. As we do that, we're looking at a more long-term look back and taking an average of that. That way, we're making sure that if something does hit the fan, and we do run into that little tight squeeze there, we're still in a comfortable spot and don't have to try to scramble and find money to cover our expenses in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those lines for 2024 estimate, we're below the 2022. I guess it probably falls along the lines.
Yeah, the 2022 is the actuals. So, that's what the difference is, is the 2024 is the estimate based off of that formula where the 2022 is actually what we took in.
But are we, are we thinking that we're not going to get the revenues that we had in 2022 in 2024?
It's, I do think we're going to at least hit those. It's one of those, the DOR won't certify our tax recap that we submit in November. If we don't have some type of formula to show that we're being within our means in those, if we inflate everything off of a one-year or even a two-year bubble, they tend to kick that back to us and say we have to redo that and be a little more conservative and careful in our funding.
I wish Congress was as conservative as you are on our city budget.
Well, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, if I may, just because Counselor Boone just reminded me, I did get a question asked during one of the committee hearings about how much revenue the airport took in last year. And I've said at that here, that committee meeting that I would get that number for the council. Year-to-date, as of this morning, the airport has taken in $60,305 in revenue for operations at the airport through the rental programs.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome, Counselor.
Anything further from the city council on the topic of the informal meeting? Mr. Mayor, if we give you the opportunity, you want to add anything about your proposed budget?
No, it's just, it's a pretty level service budget that we have, just living within our means. The total, if you were to break it down, expenses are up 16% for the city. That really adjusts for certain inflationary trends that we're seeing with the expenses that we have. The salary and labor budget, as I said, is down about a percentage and a half. Really, in termination leave, we saw a lot of retirements in the last year. Longevity, so if termination leave goes down because of the retirements, our longevity payments are also down because we have newer employees. The school department budget is up 11% from last year. However, we do have an increased amount of funding from the Commonwealth through the Student Opportunity Act of about $4.5 million, so a lot of that is taken up in that. The cable access budget is up 6%, and the enterprise funds are up 4%. For the enterprise funds and the cable funds, those are ones that we can't co-mingle funds with in terms of tax dollars versus what's taken in. The cable fund is funded solely through money that the city receives through a franchise fee from Comcast. This is set by state statute, so whether or not Gardner had Comcast, or Verizon, or Spectrum, or any other of those cable companies, that's set through the competitive process, through the cable commission outlined by Massachusetts General Law. That franchise fee is a little surcharge. It's on everyone's cable bills, who's a cable customer in the city. That comes to the city, and that's the only way we can fund the operations of the cable department. It's also why, if you notice, when we have our subcommittee meetings or our different smaller committee here, and committee commission hearings, those are filmed by a smaller camera rather than by G E T V, because those are not broadcasted on cable, and we can't have funds collected through a cable fee for a service being paid for by someone who doesn't get or doesn't pay into that service's fee. Same thing with the enterprise accounts, the golf commission, the golf enterprise account is funded through memberships and revenue raising done directly through the golf course. Water department is raised solely through water bills. Sewer department is raised solely through sewer bills. The solid waste is solely through the trash bills that are there, and landfill closure. That one, we do have to add free cash into because it's closed, and we have to monitor it for a period of thirty-five, thirty-five years. We do that annually through that. It's just one of those, we can't co-mingle funds in a certain way unless we have certain approvals from D O R. So, those departments don't affect how much we're collecting taxes every year. And then, it's a lot more than just property taxes that the city has. There's excise taxes, there's the marijuana taxes, there's the different fees and collections that the city has that break down into that category you see on your sheet called local receipt, local receipts. So, that's all built into it. It really just allows us to keep the city departments going in a modest means while still taking care of our workers with a 2% cost of living adjustment and making sure we're keeping the same level of services that we have.
Thank you. Any further comments on the topic of the informal meeting this evening? Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, he, chapter seventy, like you, like you pointed out, was huge for the schools this year. And it's 4.1 million. And our above, net over required spending is $65,000. You know, it's not often that Gardner gets that much chapter seventy money. I'm worried for what happens next year, and hopefully, people are paying attention and are going to be able to keep the people we have, and maybe, maybe even Counselor Mack can comment on the concerns that, you know, that's a boatload of money extra in what happens next year.
If I could respond to that, Madam President, too. Luckily, so the Student Opportunity Act has been signed into law. I was going to break into that last year. This is the first time that it's been implemented. What that does is, it changes the chapter seventy formula. So, now we get a higher percentage per pupil from the state now, too. So, it's increased that formula, so that actually accounts for that 4.5 million. We hope. Last year, they funded it through federal grant funding, so this year, we're hoping that it stays the same way. Gardner is in a very, I don't want to say lucky spot because we planned for it, but we're seeing other people fall into the trap, or the communities fall into the trap that we kind of predicted would happen, where certain other school districts across the Commonwealth funded positions. Commonwealth funded positions, mainly positions, as a way to make up some of that chapter seventy losses out of the federal COVID grant funding that we received, that now that that funding ends at the end of 2025, they're headed towards that financial cliff of, do we do layoffs, or how do we fund this gap that we now fund with a massive amount of federal grant funding that now dries up, and we have to make that up our own. We did not use that funding for salaries, and we freed up our regular money for those costs that are there and used it for more of the one-time capital improvements that are there, so we don't have that financial cliff looming that at least sixty different school districts are going to see in Massachusetts next year that they're all scrambling to plan for, so if you see that in the news, that's not a situation we have here in Gardner, and it's not something we have to worry about.
Well done again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Hear nothing, then we will close this part of the meeting, and we convene at 7:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you.
Could be a question. First, if you have a question. 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 If you have a question.